It is 7:01 PM and all members of council are present. I would remind everybody to leave your microphone muted as we get ready to have the prayer and the pledges. So at this time, I'll lead us in a prayer afterwards. Councilmember Schaffner will lead us in the pledges. Our kind and gracious heavenly father, we are indeed thankful for this opportunity to live in such a country that provides us freedoms to meet and to have dialogue and to govern ourselves. We thank you, Father, for the blessings that we have been receiving of health and happiness and prosperity. We ask the blessing upon the citizens of Trophy Club as they face difficult times, whether how they work or how they teach their children or how they live with the sicknesses that may affect us and with not having all the freedoms that we would like to have. We pray, Father, that your spirit would be with us as we deliberate, that we might conduct the business of our residents that is satisfying to them and pleasing to you and what we do as service. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Philip.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Philip. So as we begin, I wanted to express my gratitude for those people involved in our online Memorial Day ceremony. I hope everybody had a chance to see it. I've heard positive comments about it and I'm very pleased that we did it and thanks to everybody who made it happen. So there were people that obviously were speaking and so thanks to our council members, Michael Garassi and Carl Monger. Thanks to Wade Carroll from the town and Brandon Buff and Jeff Mitchell. And for the speakers of Mylan, Georgia, Zach Cavallis, Johnny Olson, Jim Perrow, Mindy Bone and others, Kelly Castaneda, Emily Legick, Scott Spence, all helped with the service and planting of flags. And Tyler Bone put together the entire video. So hopefully I didn't miss anyone, but thank you very much and hope people saw it. And if you didn't see it, it's worth going to see again. I think it was an excellent service with our first attempt to do a video of that celebration. It is time for public comments. The meeting is available through Facebook off of the town's website or go into Facebook and looking up trophyclub.gov. And also, if you had some comments, you can email mayorandcouncil@trophyclub.org if you have a question you'd like to ask us this evening and we'd be happy to try to answer it. This is an opportunity during our public comments for citizens to address the council on any matter. The council is not permitted to respond, take action, or discuss presentations made on an item not listed on the agenda. Presentations are to be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Lady, do we have anybody who has emailed us about speaking?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. Thank you then. We will move on to item number one. Receive Town Manager Narwood's update and provide input regarding the following COVID-19 update. Town Manager Narwood, it's yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Really not a whole lot of new information to present that hasn't been communicated to you previously, but I think it's pretty clear people are out. I think people are anxious to get back to somewhat of a normal and everybody's definition of that is different. We are pretty much in full swing getting ready for the summer months. We're looking at mid-June to be opening the pool. We're in the process of hiring lifeguards and seasonal folks to make that happen. You know, there's still, you know, a lot of questions as to, I know a lot of cities have been asked, you know, well, the governor says we can do this or we can do that, but that doesn't require cities to do it. Some are looking at canceling events or programs based on their own funding issues. Some are canceling it because the logistics of trying to meet CDC guidelines and maintain social distancing and maintain some of the health guidelines are almost impossible. You know, I've had some that have said, you know, the 25% on occupancy for restaurants was doable. It was kind of a money loser, but at 50% is really challenging because my building didn't get any bigger if I'm going to maintain social distancing. So that has become a challenge, but I think a lot of restaurants are doing far better than they expected on carryout. So we pretty much opened up Town Hall today. So we're back to pretty much full staffing, not entirely, but if citizens need to come to Town Hall to ask a question or get clarification or to, you know, take care of any kind of business, we are open and there will always be somebody from a particular department who is there and available to to address their issues or concerns. So I think we've done a really good job with the staffing we've had to accommodate most folks. So again, really, you know, we're still going to be waiting on the governor as things approach. I know June 1 is a big, big day and then there's June 15 as far as games for different adult leagues as far as softball and some of those programs, but we will continue to do what we have been doing and that is to respond where we can and follow the governor's orders and also be respectful of CDC guidelines. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody have any questions? All right, hearing no one, we will then move on to our consent agenda. All matters listed on consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered individually. Anybody wish to remove an item? And if no one does, I would entertain a motion to approve items two through five.
Make a motion to approve items two through five.
So I had a motion by Sean and a second by Michael. All in favor, show your hands in front of the screen. So a vote. I'm going to have to go to the view that gives me more people. Okay. It looked like it was unanimous to me. All right. We will move on to item six. Take appropriate action regarding entryway monumentation. So we do have some information about that and Steve, do you want to take us through some of that?
Sure. You know, in your packet, we had information regarding, there were two bidders ranging from about $90,000 to over $130,000. These were the, and you saw a presentation back in February, I believe, which council gave direction, made a few modifications and said, let's go bid this. Let's see what, you know, what we can receive as far as competitive bids. We had $50,000 budgeted in the hot funds. The low bid was about $90,000, which far exceeded what we had budgeted. Fortunately, and if I'm a little bit, Mike, let me know. The hot funds has a fund balance of about 1.5 million. So there are funds there, but as I did communicate to you, you know, we definitely expect to see a drop in hotel occupancy tax this fiscal year as well as next fiscal year. You know, seeing hotels, not just in Trophy Club, but throughout the country and the 10 to 30% occupancy is very common. We typically were in the 60 to 70%, so that's been pretty much cut in half. These entryway signs are very well done. We feel comfortable with, you know, the proposal that was submitted. Unfortunately, and this may, you know, David, you may need to interject here, but I think there was some, you know, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, that there was going to be, this would fall under that $50,000 threshold. Well, now we've gone over that $50,000 threshold and it's my understanding that that needs to be publicly bid. And we just sought out three contractors, which is fine, assuming it comes in under 50,000. So if council does want to proceed on with this, my recommendation would be to reject this bid and then rebid it publicly because it's pretty clear that the amount is going to be far over the $50,000. Again, you know, there are sufficient funds that are available. We would have to draw down a little bit of the fund balance to make that happen, but David or Wade, anything else that need to address?
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
The only other thing that I would add is that the price that you guys saw on the first two bids did not include electrical. So we can add probably $15,000 to $20,000 to electricity to each of those signs since we wanted all of the signs to be backlit. It's about $3,000 per sign to do the electric work, but it's 5,000 per site that requires boring. We know of two locations at least that will require the boring and there may be one other.
So Wade, are you saying that the price that we see in front of us does not include all the expenses?
That's correct. The only thing it does not include is electrical. Now, we got a separate pricing on electrical, but since we had kind of halted the process, we stopped going after a complete bid price because it was two different contractors.
One of the things I noticed missing from the bid where it talked about foundation and engineering costs, did we do any specs as to what the foundation of each sign really required so that it doesn't in 10 years tilt over?
My understanding was that our original bid requirements just required them to engineer the signs themselves, which wouldn't include the base.
So they would have to ensure that, you know, if they need to do any kind of soil stabilization, that would be part of their requirement?
All right. So the recommendation from staff is to reject it so that we can rebid it to satisfy the necessary things if it's over $50,000. Anybody have any questions or suggestions at this point?
Well, I don't think that that's the recommendation of staff. The recommendation of staff seemed to be not to proceed at this point. So I guess we need clarification on the actual recommendation.
But Councilman Schaffner is correct. Staff recommendation is to reject the bids. You know, there are some issues that are coming from the hotel industry that they will be most likely requesting of us for assistance. However, if council does want to proceed with this, and again, there are sufficient funds to cover this. If you are in desire to go forward with it, then we would ask you to reject and the bid and we rebid it publicly like is required by state law, but bottom line, staff's recommendation at this point is to reject the bids and we look at this project next fiscal year.
All right. So let me correct what I said. I believe I said staff's recommendation to reject the bid. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So Philip, what were you saying was not staff direction or that I didn't say?
To move forward with rebidding this, to open this up. They want to hold off and not do this until a later date. So maybe I just misunderstood you that you were saying that they wanted to reject the bid now and then immediately put it back out for the correct bid. So maybe there's just misunderstanding there, but you know, we've had this project going for seems like a long time. I have no problem rejecting the bid and holding off for a while, but I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, have this go away. I think it should stay on future agenda and I think we need a better understanding because none of us have been privy to any of the conversations with the hotels. So I think we need a better understanding of what they're asking for. I think we need a better understanding of what we potentially can do. In other words, I know that hotel occupancy, we are not the only ones who benefit from hotel occupancy. The state gets so much of a percentage and so I don't know if we can suspend ours you know, for a period of time so that perhaps that gives people more of an incentive to stay here rather than somewhere else. So I think that, at least for me, I think that staff needs to perhaps have an agenda, have a workshop, whatever we need to do to better understand what our options are of how we can help. I certainly have been one who has pushed the vouchers for guests to stay in the hotels to be able to take that voucher and then you, you know, use at a restaurant. I think that that certainly helps both industries. It helps the restaurant industries. It helps the hotel. So I'd like to explore that. I know that I read in, I think, a staff report that that or maybe a message from Steve that the hotels didn't really seem interested in that, but perhaps we can explore that more. And so I just think we need a better understanding of what our game plan is and then, you know, we can revisit the, certainly one and a half million dollars in hotel occupancy is a lot of money for a town that has very little options of how they can spend that money. And so I think we need a better understanding of, again, how we can help the hotels, how we can attract more people and then perhaps at a later date, we can revisit the monuments, but I certainly don't want to lose sight of it because I think it would be very valuable to the entrances of our town.
And let me just, you know, kind of piggyback on that. I mean, I don't have a problem with that at all and I think we're probably saying the same thing. You know, when we talked to the hoteliers about a month ago, they really didn't know what they needed either. This was so new to them and I think they were very hopeful that come summer, they may see an uptick. And I think it would probably be helpful within the next two to four weeks, we have another call with the hoteliers to see, you know, have things changed, you know, because this is evolving, you know, on a daily and weekly basis. And at that time when we met with them, they were more concerned about cleaning, security, how food is handled on buffets like you have it, you know, Hampton Inn or Homewood Suites. So we may gain a little bit more information, but their bottom line was we need people in the hotel. And, you know, their, I guess, comment and we're starting to see a lot of that out there is staycations. People don't want to fly on an airplane. You know, they would rather take trips that are one, two, three hours away. So it may be worth the time and effort to spend a little bit of time with the hoteliers to see exactly what it is they think now because we're getting better and better information every month we go by.
Council, anybody want to comment? Michael?
Yeah, I think I'm on the same page as Philip and Steve. Like I think we should look at something to help increase hotel occupancy. I think sooner rather than later is probably something we need to pursue, especially since it's already May 26th and people are going to start making moves to find homes this summer for Charles Schwab is coming and other businesses. I know several people that are up and moving from other parts of the country and getting out of certain areas and coming to areas like Texas and other states kind of like that. And so I think now's a good time for us to try to get people into the hotels here as opposed to someplace else because people are going to be looking for homes and I think we need to find a way to team with the hotels industries quickly to take advantage of that. Whether that's vouchers, whether that's whatever, whatever we can do to help them, whatever they think that they can do, they're seeing positive traction. I mean, those hotel industries, I mean, they're nationwide and so what are they doing elsewhere in other communities? Because we're not the first one to do this to try to help increase that revenue for them. What are they doing? I'd like to hear what other options they can bring to the table because obviously we don't have all the answers here. I'd like to hear what they had to say. But I would also agree to the point of the agenda item here that I would like to see the monument signs continue. I'm not saying we're going to vote, I'm going to vote for it. This time I understand and I accept staff's recommendation to put this out to public bid and I support that. I would also say that if we don't have things in there like electrical and the boring that's in there, I'd like to see what the cost is going to be for the signs. I appreciate your input there, Wade, and staff's efforts, but I don't want to put you guys in a situation where we're having to guess what the price is going to be. I'd like for the contractors to tell us what the price is going to be to do the signs. And that means we put this off for 90 days. We put it off for 90 days to get those answers, but I would like to make the most of hot tax going into the summer months and I'd also like to move forward with the signs because to Philip's point, this has been on the agenda item for a long time and I'd like to see it move forward.
All right, Carl?
I agree. Now's not the time to move forward without taking it to bid, but I think we need to go ahead and put the bid out now.
Carl, get a little closer to your mic.
Is that better? Can you hear me better? I was trying not to block myself out with this thing. Well, I think we need to go ahead and put it out to bid now because contractors are going to be hungry because they want the work. Fuel prices are low. Now's the time we'll get potentially the best price. So, and it doesn't cost us anything and we don't have to accept any of those bids if we don't want to, but I think we need to proceed forward with getting bids. I agree, we can't accept this one because it's over the 50,000 threshold.
I agree that we should not accept this because of the technicality, technicality, but I really would like to see a more complete bid that included the engineering, 1.5 million dollar balance in hotel funds that have limited ability for us to spend on. There has been some discussion with the governor's office and with the hotel association to see what they would buy in to expand the ways that hotel occupancy tax could be used to help the hotels. So one of the thoughts has been market Trophy Club and try to say that we have the hotels available for people and you can use hotel occupancy tax for that. But we don't even have a proposal in front of us to accomplish that task and how do you make sure that you cover all the bases in that? So I don't want this to die and without having all the facts, it's hard to make a decision. Now, I don't know that we need to take any action. You can correct me if I'm wrong, David or Steve, but we were agenda to consider appropriate action with the choosing of a vendor for entryway monumentation. So if you want to make a motion that says we want to reject those bids and do something else, you could do so. Or I guess we could take no action, but that also doesn't give any direction to staff. Anybody else want to speak?
Mayor, if you don't take any action, it's less clear. If you reject the bids, it's easier and cleaner for us to restart the process.
All right. Thank you, David. All right. I make a motion that we reject the bids for entryway monumentation and do direct staff to develop more thorough bids that include any electrical needed related to that and any irrigation that might be related to that and to make sure that the engineering for the base is sufficient to keep it steady and secure and that they come back to council within 90 days if possible.
Second?
So who seconded?
Ashon Bone can have it.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Do you want to discuss this further? All right. Seeing no one wishing to do so, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, show your hands. One, two, three, four, wait a minute. Five. Okay, it is unanimous. I probably will not try to conduct the meeting from an iPad again because I can't see everybody on the screen. All right. So we, all opposed, same sign. None opposed. It is unanimous. Steve, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, staff, for putting together something. It has been on our agenda for a long time and I noticed that you must have had some conversations with me anywhere in 7-Eleven for that site.
Correct.
All right. Item number seven. Take appropriate action on holding the Fourth of July fireworks. So you have reports from you, but let's see if Steve wants to make any additional comments about that report.
No, we've, you know, we've given you a fair amount of information. You know, this has been a big topic for staff and I think it's been a big topic in other communities as well. What we do know at this point, Rowan Oak has canceled their fireworks show on July 3rd. It's going to be more of a virtual program. You've got Hazlet, Keller, Flower Mound, Grapevine had originally said they were going to hold their fireworks. They have since changed and they have canceled it. Bedford has canceled. South Lake had indicated to us last week they were canceling it, but we have not been able to confirm that. They were supposedly going to make an announcement last week, but we have not seen that. But the other communities have canceled. You know, and probably, you know, the big concern is with all those cities canceling, what does that do? Should we proceed on with the fireworks show? Do we have 5,000 people here? Do we have 10,000? Do we have 20,000? We just don't know and, and you know, your guess is probably as good as mine. But, you know, we're, we're ready to do what, you know, what council wants. It's my understanding that I think we're all in agreement or from what I've heard in comments that we get the fact that, you know, the food vendors, the entertainment, that's not what we're talking about. We're just talking about the actual fireworks show itself. And, you know, there are some concerns there. I know Chief Arada has talked to counterparts, you know, our neighbors and there's some concern about assisting us. You know, do they bring their own officers or firefighters into a situation that exposes their employees? Potential concerns. You know, we just don't know and, you know, social distancing, you know, may be a challenge. You know, I think we, most of us may have seen that, you know, in New York and some cities, they're painting white circles in parks to keep everybody within a circle that's a family and they're six feet apart. But at this point, you know, staff recommendation is is to not have the fireworks show and maybe look at an alternate plan similar to what is doing. But at the, if, if, if council wants to proceed with our work show, we're you know, we're, we're ready to assist and pull it off and make sure it happens as safely as possible. We get into issues of you know, okay, we have a fireworks show. We all know that people don't get there fifteen minutes prior to. They're going to be getting there three, four and five hours to get the best spot. So do we provide restrooms, you know, porta potties? What about water? You know, it's going to be a hundred, hundred and five degrees that time of year. So at what point, I mean, as far as providing facilities, you know, do we make that distinction? Do we have those porta potties and water stations or do we not? So, so again, I don't think it's, you know, it's a lock that every city's canceling. Some cities are going forward with fireworks shows and I just think that it, it does create some challenges that is a little different for us. You know, our past history has been, you know, this event brings out four to five thousand people. Well, we don't know what this event's going to bring out now. You know, once, you know, some of our neighboring cities cancel. And, and again, we don't know what South Lake is doing. I've heard some comments, they're looking at some other options, but, but again, you know, we're just ready to take direction from you. Got both chiefs here. If you've got any questions regarding you know, any public safety issues there, they've been meeting for the past week on these items, so. That's pretty much, pretty much it, Mayor, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. I did reach out to Mayor Rowan Oak and the Mayor of South Lake today. Rowan Oak, I think, has already advertised on their social media what they're doing, which is a total online virtual type experience. For a while, they were oscillating back and forth of what do they do or not do. South Lake, according to today, they haven't announced and will probably announce over the weekend what they're going to do. Their latest consideration is to do two fireworks displays. One at Bicentennial, one at the north part of town, maybe somewhere around Gateway. But that decision has not really been made. They are going to cancel all other activities. But they are concerned about getting large crowds together if they have a Facebook, I mean, a one place that they show fireworks. They also are looking at a online version of it for people that don't want to get out for that. That would include music and a fireworks show of some type, whether or not that's live or not. They haven't really decided. So that's up in the air. Sean, did you get to talk to somebody at Grapevine Chamber today?
Yes, the president, I don't remember her last name, Rhonda. She said that they were undetermined and haven't made a final decision yet on whether or not they're going to have fireworks. They, they, I believe the verb she used, they're waiting for the governor's update on Monday next week.
Yeah, we hear that the governor may have some statements about Fourth of July that's coming next week.
Right.
So I do know that the mayor of West, of South Lake. Because we had had discussions about do we provide restrooms and water? And her comment was, no, they weren't going to do that at all. People had to do whatever they were going to do. And they would publicize it that way. Now, of course, that could change, but that's kind of what they're talking about. At this point, they're not trying to encourage people to get out and watch the fireworks, but those people that want to get out to be able to do so. Anybody else?
So my perspective is that I think we should plan to move forward with fireworks. And I don't understand where the four to five thousand people showing up is coming from when we don't have an event, all we're doing is fireworks. I understand the large draw coming in when we have our event, it's a great event. But I, I don't know how long the event's been going on. It's been going on since we lived here in two thousand twelve. It just seems I, I don't understand where that number's coming from. You know, is there data backing that up? If there is, I'd like to see it, but to me, it, it just doesn't seem logical if that many people are going to get the trophy club to watch fireworks and they're going to get their four to five hours. You know, they're going to show up at five, six o'clock for a nine o'clock or a nine thirty fireworks event.
Anybody else have comments?
I just have some questions that I'd like to get from staff back, just so we have some clarification on that and just I mean, I just kind of know, no priority order here, but just you know, is this, would the fireworks be funded by hot tax? Kind of yes or no? Kind of to Sean's point, kind of, when it comes to the police and EMS and, and fire responding to folks, what would be the plan to, to accommodate any number? I mean, is there, we've been throwing out four or five. I mean, what's the plan to accommodate four or five if we think that a thousand that is? If, if we think there's going to be more people, what would the plan be to accommodate those folks? I mean, at what point do we say that, hey, with our people we have on staff, with police and fire, can we say we don't feel comfortable, we can safely take care of the public at this point? I mean, I'd like to see what those plans look like and what those are so we can make an informed decision. I mean, I understand count, staff is saying we want to cancel, but I'd like to understand why because the majority of people I talk to, they're, they're asking the same questions I'm asking and why can't we have fireworks? When it comes to police involvement, I mean, I would say that my standpoint would be is hey, chief, that you're, you guys would be there just to make sure people aren't doing things and just to keep the peace. But I would not be expecting your team and your, your, your department or EMS to help out and maintain a six radius. I mean, I think that's at some point, people have to take personal responsibility for their own actions when they're outside their own house. If people don't feel comfortable going to the fireworks, they can stay at home. If, a lot of people have parties and have always had parties and they usually have those things in people's backyards. I know that doesn't accommodate everybody. But just, those are some things I think we should take into consideration and I'd just like to see what that would look like. If we're not going to move forward with the fireworks, what would a virtual plan look like? And I just have several questions from staff, like what would these things look like and what are our constraints? Before I feel like I can make a, an informed decision to just cancel at this point, I'd still like to kind of keep going forward and continue to vet this until we feel like hey, the data's showing that we're, we're at a point where we can't safely conduct the fireworks.
Okay. And I'll let the chiefs handle the public safety response, but as far as the funding through hot funds, it's currently budgeted for the entire event, including overtime, et cetera, out of hot funds. You move this to solely just a fireworks show? You know, I think you, you do run a little bit of a, a concern. Is that a legitimate use of hot funds? So if it's not hot funds, then it would be general fund. And I don't think any of us want to put any more pressure on the general fund than, than is necessary. So you know, again, you know, I hear what Councilman Bone is saying. I just think anytime you have a fireworks show, you're going to get people. And, and I, I may be totally wrong, there may only be a few hundred people that show up and people try to get on in their backyards and watch it. And, you know, and, and we'll deal, deal with that, but you know, as far as the public safety response, I think they're have the same concerns I do is what is the you know, what is the crowd? It's one thing to deal with two or three thousand, it's another thing to deal with ten or fifteen thousand. So again, I'll, I'll let the two chiefs address that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in there for a minute. With the, with the way our show exists today, it is, it is a, a low altitude show and it's in a confined, confined space. It's over there in this area where we've done it for the last several years. And so to view it, you're going to have to be fairly close. And I think I'll leave the number of estimated people to Tony. In the past, when we've had our event, it has been about forty five hundred people, four to forty five hundred people in this confined space. And if we did a show and we're the only people in the area doing a show, I think the number is a a question. But the police department, and I'm sure T Taylor will say the same thing, will handle, you know, whoever comes, will be able to maintain safety in a secured site. It's just, you know, how many people show up is a good question. I mean, it's, it's definitely not unknown. But, you know, we have, we'll have all, all the policemen working that day for the event. I would anticipate people showing up early. You know, they may even, you know, break out some stuff and some some towels and chairs and, and set up. That's pretty common for a fireworks show regardless of what other events are going on. People show up a little early to get a bet, the best spot. So, and that's some, any questions? I'll stop now since I can't see everybody.
And, and just one point of clarification. The firework vendor has stated to us, they need a you know, if we're going to go forward with it, they need that answer by June eighth. Our next council meeting is June ninth. I'm sure you know, they'd give us a couple of days. And the reason they said June eighth is they like to give approximately around thirty days to get through the permitting process. So so again.
Do we issue the permit?
It's more of a state issue.
No, okay.
So, so again, if this is something you want to hold for two weeks, you know, till the next council meeting, I I mean, I don't think that's going to be the end of the and get more information. But you know, we'll what we need to deal with.
What, what's the time window on the permit? When they get the permit, if, if they get the permit and we can't do it on the Fourth of July, what's does the permit, is it good for thirty days or you know, is, is there a possibility of pushing the fireworks and maybe even the entire festival off by month? And doing it later, I, I, I'd like to state upfront, I'm in favor of doing the fireworks show. I don't think we're going to have five thousand people that show up, given the current environment. I do think that there's going to be a traffic issue if we do a fireworks show. But I think it'll be minimal because we're not doing all the festivities that typically attract all of those families. I mean, who's going to want to go sit in their car with their kids for four hours to wait for a thirty minute fireworks show? There will be some that will, but without all of the festivities that go along to keep those kids occupied, that's going to, that's going to hold some of them back.
Hey Wade, you were.
Yes, sir. So I spoke to Tony and Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have, can reschedule the fireworks show by contract as far out as, as, as April of twenty twenty one. So anytime between now and April. And the band, we can reschedule the band from between now and December thirty first.
That's correct.
You know, I think that probably the prudent thing to do would be to just delay this decision until the next council meeting. That gives time for us to see what other cities are going to do. It gives time for us to hear what the governor's going to say. And it gives us enough time to contact the, I mean, it's the next day, like Steve said, it's probably, you know, that's not going to be detrimental. And so I think that the prudent thing to do is probably just hold off. Let's see what other cities are going to do. And then, and then what the governor says, and then we can make the decision at the next council meeting and and still have time to plan. And I, I certainly wouldn't be, I think as staff, you probably should just go ahead and plan as if it's going to happen. And then, you know, obviously if we make the decision to cancel, you can cancel those plans. But I think at this point, we should probably hold off until the next meeting to make that decision. Sorry about that.
No, and we are, we are going forward with planning as if it's going to happen. So, you know, and we're talking to the country club, we're talking to other areas that if there's other options we can look at. You know, we'll, we'll, you know, we will sure explore that, so. Proceeding on as if it's going to happen until you tell us otherwise.
I, I mean, for, for me, it would be great to have, to have it. But if, if, if South Lake is going to have it, I don't see why we would have ours. If South Lake is having, especially if South Lake is having two different types, like Nick said, I don't see why we would have ours when people could actually, there's better spacing in South Lake than there is in Trophy Club. We then could position like Carl was saying and have a much bigger festival, a much bigger turnout, a much a, a bigger experience later in the year because we would still have that money to set aside where we could do those things, we could reschedule the band, we could reschedule and, and things certainly will be much more open later in the year. But, you know, if nobody's having it and the governor says pushes for it, then, you know, we make a different decision. But I just think that if South Lake is going to have theirs, there's more opportunity to spread out in South Lake than there is Trophy Club. I, I don't disagree with the chief. You know, that people will come. If we're the only game in town, people will come and, and it, it's going to be difficult for our staff to deal with that. And I think that you you know, certainly are going to have people that don't feel comfortable going. You're going to, you know, alienate some people in town that might want to see it, but don't feel comfortable. You know, can't go in their backyard, can't go in their driveway and see it and don't feel comfortable going to the other side of town and, and and everything. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of unknowns and I think that we can, we'd be, we'll be better in a better position two weeks from now to make that decision.
Thank you. More thing, just to, I'll be sure I can, I'm sorry, Nick, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Michael.
So one more thing, just to kind of let both chiefs know that, I mean, they'd have my support. I mean, I'm like with Carl and and I saw what you're alluding to. I'm, I'm in favor of having the fireworks show. Again, I'm going to say that I think it boils down to personal responsibility, but at the same time, I would like to, to not put our guys out there, our, our first responders in a hole, but I would support both chiefs, if, if we had a traffic plan and street closures and like the wristbands that we usually have before. When we had, usually have the festival for the residents that live in those areas, we may have to have street closers in order to accommodate a little bit larger crowd. I'll just kind of, again, I would like to see what we're looking at, if we do expect a little bit larger than normal or just to be sure we have some type of control over the numbers we do expect, what that plan would look like in order to support that area. But anyways, I'm I'm afraid that if we wait till later in the year, the summer, something else always comes up. And this is the Fourth of July and I think a lot of everyone on this call will agree with me that and not to make a political statement here, but just saying it because it's kind of the way I feel, just that I mean, it's what it represents and what we represent as a country and, and as is this body. And I just think pushing that off just kind of takes away from what the Fourth of July represents. That's just my opinion. I'd like to have it if we're going to have it then. And to move forward, at least with, with more information and a plan before we make a final decision. But like everybody's saying, in two weeks, we'll have more information from the governor, we'll have more data that's out and we'll have more information.
So I saw Carl put his hand up, Carl.
You know, I, my climbing gym's reopened. I have to go into their website three or four days before I want to go because they only have a limited number of slots. I have to register and they check me out when I come in. Maybe there's a way staff could take a look at what would be manageable. And can we open up some kind of registration process ahead where you register, you print something off? When you drive in, you show it. If you've got it, you're allowed in. If you don't have it, you, you don't come in. So there may be a way to control at least some of the population.
So I, I am very mixed on it. I think it is somewhat irresponsible, even though that's a little harder term than I'm really wanting to say. To, to schedule something that makes people get closer together, given where we are with the virus. Obviously, the last figures, the last few days look real positive. But I don't think we've seen what's going to happen as people get out and do more. My impression of what people are doing is people are still pretty conservative about getting My impression of what people are doing is people are still pretty conservative about getting out uh, and doing stuff. You know, last, not this past weekend, but we can before, I went to Home Depot, took me 20 minutes waiting in line to get in because of social distancing. Went to another store, they were counting numbers and I had to wait till they had people exit the building before you could go in. I don't know how we control this. I think it's an interesting idea to say that you register. That allows you to come in and park on Parkview or come in and park at the town at Independence East or whatever parking lot. Maybe you could accomplish that or not. I think that's going to require a lot of staff to direct people to the proper place. And, um, I realize that if you tried to do some type of fireworks celebration later in the year, that it's not going to have the same significance as Fourth of July would have. There surely are going to be things on television, uh, about the Fourth of July uh, that people watch each year and they could participate in that. But I think that we stand the risk of promoting more people getting closer together. Uh, and I think it could play, could play some pressure on our fire EMS and police staff. And how do they plan for that? Do they plan? You know, Plan A is a thousand people coming in, Plan B is 4,000 people? And do you call people off at the last minute? Because I don't know that you're going to know how many people are going to show. I think it's going to be extremely difficult to manage it well, and I don't know how South Lake's going to do it. I'm quite okay with waiting to see what the governor does and see what South Lake does. To, to maybe see what we want to do. So South Lakes will be on the third if they do it, just to let you know that. All right, anybody else?
Uh, just so y'all know too, we did reach out to a videographer that we work with and we got an estimate on a virtual that would be the show with some other elements to it and some video messages from each of you. So, uh, and that cost was roughly a thousand dollars for everything fully, uh, delivered, so.
1,000?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's surely something we could do if you want Trophy Club to be on the map and have something that people do. But though you would, if you do it on the fourth, you're going to compete with national things that are on television maybe, so I don't know. Anybody else want to comment? Sean?
Yeah, so going back to the hot tax and the use of it, if we are only putting on a fireworks show, David, can you chase down and answer and give, um, someone at the state that question and get some clarity so we know whether or not we can use hot tax for the fireworks if it's just a fireworks show and then nothing else is going on?
I will work on that. One of the, the wild card in that question is how open are the hotels right now?
Yeah.
And what they are doing to that, that, because if they're not open, we're definitely not putting heads in beds. Or if they're limited capacity, but yeah, I will work on that.
Yeah. And then the other thing that I wanted to, to mention is I don't want to push this off two weeks. And the ninth roll around and the vendor come back and say, oh, well, there's absolutely nothing we can do. Is it possible for us to give staff direction to move forward with an asterisk of we'll make a final determination at the next meeting, but that would give the vendor or give them enough of a vendor or contact the vendor before the eighth and let us know what's going on?
The contract allows us past the eighth, I believe. It was just a verbal request from the vendor when staff reached out to.
Okay.
Contractually, we have passed the
And, uh, do, do we have to vote on whether or not we have fireworks? Or is it something that can just move forward?
You don't have to vote, but Steve's looking for direction. So Steve, your mic is off, so we can't hear you.
Yeah, I mean, it's not something you need to vote on. It's just something we're, as the mayor said, we're just looking for direction.
Okay.
But you know, we're, we're getting close to 30 days out. And, you know, we, there are logistics we got to plan for.
Yep, for sure.
So would everybody on council be comfortable with saying, move forward with a little more investigation? Make sure the vendor knows, well, one other day.
Chief, Chief Naylor had his hand up to speak, so I, I didn't, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I was going to give him a chance to speak.
Yes, sir. Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to make the point that talking to neighboring communities, Roanoke in particular, they're not having uh, their fireworks show. Uh, if we had an increased crowd, would we be able to rely on them to help us both for police and fire? And I know that from a fire perspective, they're reluctant to do that just because they're not having their show in Roanoke and are a little bit reluctant to expose their personnel to that amount of a crowd right now. With all the, all the pains we've gone through and the training to be able to limit the exposure we've had with our patients and kind of change our approach on E M S um, that, that it, you know, extended increased exposure that we have is causing some concern for neighboring communities. We'll do whatever you ask us to do, obviously. And if it's our normal crowd, we can handle that. I don't think right now we have a way of knowing how much that's going to increase depending on what the other cities around us do, what their shows.
All right. So I think it's probably appropriate to have an up and down vote as I think about this, uh, so that we at least know you want to go forward in investigation or not go forward in investigation. Because it's going to take some time on the part of staff to continue to plan uh, for that. I appreciate, um, Jay's comment about the hesitancy from the other departments uh, of what kind of support uh, that we can get from them. Obviously, I think there would be support if we had severe issues. But I can understand their hesitancy to have their people work extra hours or put in an extra shift or that kind of thing uh, when they're not doing anything. At least that's, I'm, I swear, I'm understanding what you're saying, Jack.
Yes, sir. It's based on what they already had, the, the budget they have set up for their special event. Now they're not having their special event. If we have ours and we have an influx of people that are along that 377 corridor and they, they get in the Walmart parking lot, they get Chick-fil-A all along in that area to watch our fireworks show, that's increased the burden on their personnel and their staffing. That's, that's the concern that they have.
All right, anybody want to try to make a motion of direction? All right, I'm going to, I'm going to force it. I move that we cancel our fireworks show and don't do any more investigation on it. Do I get a second? All right. So it dies for the last, lack of a second. All right.
I make a motion that we move forward with fireworks and continue investigation.
I second that.
What was the motion?
That we move forward with fireworks and continue investigation.
All right. So we have a motion to move forward with planning for fireworks from Sean Bone and a second from Michael. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that, but I, we need to make a firm decision at the next council meeting. That's all I would say.
I agree. Anybody else want to? I'm worried about the other, the vendor not, you know, if it's January 8th or 10th, they're not going to have an issue with that. But I, I agree with Philip that we need to, we need to have a date certain so that we can either, you know, it's go or no go.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, anybody else want to comment? Don't see anyone trying to comment, so I will call for the vote. Keep your hands up for a moment because I do have to change screens to see how people vote. All those in favor of the motion to move forward with the planning of Fourth of July until our next council meeting, please show your hands. All right. So have Sean, Michael, Carl and Philip with yes, all opposed, same sign. I opposed and I can't even see my own hand, so. Wherever it is, there we go. So I oppose. All right. So the motion does pass on a four, one vote. That takes us to the end of our agenda except for executive session. I don't have anything at this time that we would go into executive session for. Any member of council wish to do that? There ain't no one trying to speak. Uh, it is 8:01 and we will stand adjourned. Thank you very.